All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the March 8, 2021 workshop for the Greenville City Council. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I'll be moderating tonight's or this afternoon's meeting. First, I'd like to call on the clerk, Madam Clerk, for the roll call.
Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover? Nope, you're muted.
Mayor Protem Glover here.
All right, welcome back. Councilmember Daniels?
Hi, sir.
Councilmember Bell?
Councilmember Bell here.
All right. Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Present, Councilmember Litchfield.
Okay. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I'm here.
All right. Mayor Connolly, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of the agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes to the afternoon's agenda?
No, Mayor, I have no changes for this evening's agenda.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call the city clerk for the votes.
Okay, Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels? Oh, you're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
How you doing?
Councilmember Bell, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business. Madam Manager, our first item.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item this evening is a presentation by Chris Smith, who is with Governmental Affairs with Metronet. And I will turn it on over to Ms. Smith for her presentation.
And before Ms. Smith starts, somebody, one of our wonderful staff members had informed me that it is Ms. Smith's birthday today.
Oh, happy birthday!
Happy birthday! Happy birthday! Thank you all very much. I really appreciate that, it's very kind, thank you.
We'll spare you the song.
Well, I appreciate that as well, thank you so much. If you guys will just bear with me one second, I'm gonna share my screen. I'm used to using Teams, so I want to make sure I get this correct. I don't want to be four slides in and someone say, "Are we looking at something? I think I missed it." All right, can everyone see what I'm sharing?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, excellent. So, good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you again so much for having me this afternoon. I've got a brief presentation about Metronet. As you know, we recently entered into an agreement with the city of Greenville. And so what I would like to review with you guys today is a little bit about what you can expect next steps are in the area, and how we're gonna communicate with residents so that we can try to make this a fairly smooth process. Again, no one wants to discount the fact that this is construction. It is telecom construction, and it's likely telecom construction that hasn't happened in your community since probably the 50s and 60s. So it is gonna look a little bit different. And I want to make sure that everyone feels like there's lots of transparency between us and the city, and that residents are getting lots and lots of communication about what to expect. So again, we want to reduce surprises, we want to prevent call volume to your city centers, provide transparency and accountability. So we have several, we have several touchpoints that we're going to utilize to do this, to let residents know what to expect. We'll reach them via the mail, we'll put yard signs, and I'm gonna show you some examples of that. We're going to try to connect with them on social media. I've already been in partnership with Brock, and that's been a great experience. I understand there's already a video that we're gonna release for the city. Again, all of this to be able to communicate to your residents, and so that you don't get phone calls that say, "I didn't know what was happening, no one told me." So it's important that we do that. If you guys have suggestions for me, if you know of more vocal areas in your communities, especially council, and you want to make sure that we can get in front of those and make sure that I have plenty of information to provide, I'm also happy to do that as well. So the first step that we start with is about 45 to 30 days out before we go into a residential area. Our tribal language for that is we call those LCPs. But we'll send a construction letter that looks just like this. It's a little bit of information, who's Metronet? Are they allowed to be here? How can I go get more information about Metronet? And so that'll come in the mail. A lot of folks might miss this letter. I know a lot of us get letters in the mail, and if we're not sure who they're from, we might miss that. So our second step is about 10 to 14 days out. We'll send a postcard. It's typically gonna be in a neon color, just like this green. Sometimes it might be orange. Again, maybe you missed our letter, here's, here's a note saying we're coming. Construction's coming to your area, it is Metronet. Here's how you contact us with questions, concerns. Maybe that's a dog fence, maybe that's a sprinkler system. Maybe you've just got very elaborate landscaping, that's your hobby, and you want to make sure where are we gonna be doing that digging. All of that, we want people to just reach out to us directly. About five to seven days out from construction start, we'll have a street team go out and they'll place these turf signs, yard signs. This is an example of the size of that sign. Here's an example of what that sign looks like, just a larger version. Again, we're just saying, heads up, we're gonna do construction, we're coming to your area. Expect us soon. Here's how to contact us directly for questions. The next thing that we'll do is we'll put a larger version of that sign in residential areas where there's an entrance and an exit to a neighborhood. So again, maybe, you know, those street signs went in, maybe you missed some of the mail as you're driving in and out from work, you should be able to see this sign. It's about the size of a Realtor sign. So again, we're letting people know, hey, we're getting ready to come into your area. Another thing that we like to do is this is called a construction easement flyer. If that easement, because our permission allows us to work in the city right-of-way and in the easements, sometimes easements are located in the front, the side, and in some cases, the rear of a yard. And in lots of cases, people like me who have a rear easement weren't aware of that when they put in a fence. So I have a fenced area, and I also have a pet. So anytime that we're accessing a rear easement, or an area where we feel like we need to notify the resident, we'll knock the door. If they're not there, we'll place this flyer, it's got a sticky back to it. We'll try to put it on a garage door, on a front door, wherever it makes the most sense. Typically garage doors, if one's available. Most of us drive into the garage and don't enter through our front doors. So it lets the resident know, what are we doing? What do we need access to? And then the crew foreman will put his name and phone number here at the bottom. So if there's a question, maybe someone's an early riser or has second shift type work that they do, just so that we can communicate. And if they have questions about what we're doing or why, they can contact us directly. Part of the communications, we provide a telephone number to our customer service group, and we also provide a website. The website is dedicated solely to construction, so it's not a sales website. It's not a place where residents can go and see pricing or sign up for services. It's dedicated solely to construction and construction information. On that website, we'll have an interactive map of Greenville. It'll say areas that'll be highlighted as under construction, future construction, or construction complete. You can take a look here to see, maybe that crew that's out there, you know, is working for another utility provider, and you just want to double check that. Hopefully, you're just excited and you wanted to see where Metronet's gonna be and when we'll be in your area, and you can find that here on this map. There's also a tab for ask questions that's over here on the right. Very, very simple. Enter your contact information, the reason, and you self, residents will self-choose that reasons for contacting us. Some brief notes about that. There's a place to upload pictures. Again, if you've got some areas of concern, or maybe we came through and we did some restoration, but you still had some questions, or it wasn't to that resident's satisfaction, they can upload those pictures and click submit. We, we will respond to that question within one business day. And so we have a 99% response time on that, which we're very, very proud of. We want to always be in constant communication with residents so that we can ensure that we're doing a good job during construction. We restore as we go, which is another question that I'm often asked. So no, we don't come into a neighborhood, do all of our work, and then go back and restore it. Residents should expect us to be restoring an area within 24 to 48 hours. If there's something pretty in-depth in that area, it could potentially go as long as three days. We try to avoid that whenever possible, or unless there's a weather delay. One thing I'd like to assure you, Mayor, and members of council, our crews will always be very easy to identify. They will have signage on all of their vehicles that say contractor for Metronet, or if they're one of our, again, our industry term is O S P E, but one of our engineers that monitors those crews, they'll have Metronet on their trucks. Everyone will be wearing a picture badge with their first and last name. They'll all also be wearing safety vests with a Metronet logo on the back. And then we'll work in partnership with the city to provide a daily list of location and the crew names, so that anytime there's a question about what crew's doing what, you always know if that's a Metronet crew. Again, our responsiveness, everyone is required within one business day to reach back out to anybody with a question or a ticket that they've provided us. Anyone that calls into our customer service line will get a ticket and a ticket number that they can research. Anyone that, you know, might need to escalate a certain situation, you're welcome to do that through me, even I'll enter a ticket so that we can track that data. And then I provide that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think that was somebody's phone in the background.
No, thank you for that. And I'll track that information as well. So one of the things that I'll do, and we just talked about those tickets, is each month when I meet with the city, I'm gonna review what's going on during the construction project. As you guys may or may not know, we're estimating around a year for this project from start to completion. Each month, I'll provide a report that shows how much underground footage we completed the month prior, how much aerial footage we completed the month prior. Every ticket that came into Metronet, you'll be able to see a breakdown of the categories, what were those categories. You'll also be able to see where we're tracking, how often did, you know, we meet our deadline of reaching out to someone within one business day. So again, we want to provide accountability, not only to our group, but transparency to the city, so that you know that we're a good steward and that we are doing what we say we'll do. This is just an example for you guys of what to expect to see as facilities start to get installed. Underground facilities, this is a picture of our flower pot, and it's this, we call it a flower pot, again, industry lingo, right? Because it's a small round, it's about the size of a sewer lid. Below that, you'll see, we call this the vault. One of the things that I like to point out is, Metronet's goal in this is to be very unobtrusive. Again, it's construction, we're gonna be messy during that process, but we like to place our facilities, and those will mount flush to the ground so that people can mow over the top of them. They don't feel the need to landscape around them because they're an eyesore. We try to be, you know, the least invasive as possible. This is an example of one of the boxes that they might see if we gum aerial. Metronet will typically follow power when we install our facilities. So anyone who lives in an area where their power is underground will most likely follow suit. Same thing with aerial. This is an example of the construction business card that all of our crew members will carry. Some of our crews might have folks that English is their second language. We'll always have someone on that crew that speaks English, but they might be two houses down, dealing with something else. So we ask all members of our crews to carry these business cards. If there's ever a question or concern, or there might be a language barrier, they can always pass these out, and residents with questions can always reach out to our customer service line, again, or they can go on our website to ask questions. I also offer these to cities, especially city engineering and things like that, if they run into folks that have questions with Metronet. These are nice and handy to have on site. Back to our construction communication website. We have some videos on here on what folks can expect. Again, I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, this is construction. But this type of construction, telecom construction like this, probably hasn't happened in your city since the 1950s or 60s. So it's not unrealistic for me to get residential calls that say, "I've lived here 35 years, no one's, you know, had to dig a hole of this nature." Again, we're placing all of these facilities 100% fiber optically. So this, these are nice videos for reference. I've also been working with some great folks there at the city, and, you know, talking about, these are some great videos that are good for social media. So sometimes members of council might like to do an announcement as well. They can use videos like these. I have links to these, or I've also provided those to Brock, if anybody finds that useful. And this is my contact information. So any questions that you guys have that come up, any escalations, please reach out to me directly. I'm happy to assist with anything I can as we get the project started. And so with that, I would also like to talk to you a little bit about, we're hopefully starting as soon as mid-April for our construction process. I think we're working through some permit applications now, and so that's a very positive experience. So it could be starting as soon as April. The area that I'm showing that we're going to be starting in is near our equipment shelter or hut, which is about a half a block South Arlington on Commerce. And then we'll head towards the downtown area, because that's where we'll primarily be working on our, we call it a feeder ring. I like to refer to it as the spine. So it's the main areas within your city, and from that, we'll branch off into residential areas. My understanding is this is primarily business districts, so businesses won't receive this type of communication. They're a little more used to utility work that goes on, and so, you know, it's not a surprise to them to see us out there. Again, our crews will be very well marked if there's ever a question. And then I'd just like to turn it over to you all, what questions do you have for me?
Are there any questions for Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels?
How are you doing today?
How wonderful, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. We had discussed it before, the areas in which Metronet would be coming. Did you ever find out if it was going out past the airport?
That is a great question. I can follow up with someone on that. Is there a particular street that you're interested in?
The Countryside Estates, Red Oak, and Greenville Terrace areas.
Their, their map is up at metronet.com/construction. You can click on Greenville, and there's little blue, little blue shaded areas everywhere they say they're gonna build.
So are those included on the map?
It's loading.
Okay.
Let me verify, though, you said Countryside Estates, Red Oak, what was that?
And Greenville Terrace.
Greenville Terrace.
There was a lot of stuff north of the river, so I'm assuming.
Yeah, and I just, I know we had talked about it before, and I just kind of want, people have been asking about it, they're really excited.
Well, I am happy to get you more details. Can I ask who's speaking, and then I can get this information back to maybe Adrian to get to you?
It's Councilmember Daniels, Monica Daniels.
Thank you, Councilmember Daniels.
You're welcome.
What other questions can I answer today?
Any questions for Ms. Smith?
Yeah, there, I was, like I said, I've been exploring your website, and I did notice that while the map's up, if you click on the order early, that functionality doesn't seem to work. So if you're gonna be sending people to them this, I'm sure they're gonna want to do that.
Yeah, I, as we get closer to launching the residential LCPs in the areas once we start construction, those types of areas will start to open up. And we do release as we go, so as we build areas, we release areas. So until they're released, we won't have that available yet.
Chris?
Yes.
In the, and part of, part of mine is in Monica's district, that we kind of shared, you know, one little side. But in the West Greenville area, there's not even any type of, of, of thing to help the kids get online. So it's really, it's really bad over here. And so if we continue schooling, and every now and then the kids get out of school, depending on how many cases of COVID they've had, you know, that week. But in this area, there's not, not even, Suddenlink has anything put down that's really strong, because where I live, I can barely get internet from Suddenlink.
Yeah, would you mind to send me maybe an address for that area? And are you looking to do some, maybe some programs with the school system? Or is it more of a question about service in that area?
It's more of a question about service in the area.
Okay, yeah, you've got my email address on the screen. If you'll email me that, I can verify that information and get it right back to you.
Okay, thank you.
It's my pleasure.
If I might add, on what Mayor Protem Glover was stating, we have community centers in those areas, and so they, you know, some of those may have after-school programs as well.
Well, and we're, we're happy to discuss with somebody, working together on providing some internet services for those areas. We do that in a lot of our communities, and I'm happy to coordinate that effort if that's something that you think you'd be interested in pursuing.
That sounds great to me.
Yeah, yeah, that would be wonderful. We, we do a lot of programs like that, actually. So yeah, let me get you some additional information on that.
Hey, Madam, Madam Manager, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there's something in our contract too that stated that with Metronet, we were gonna have, I guess, one location that would be available for service for, for, I guess, citizens or children that do not have internet access to? Is that right?
That's correct, Mayor. There, the contract does require Metronet to extend service to one community center that the city would designate, for which they would provide that service. We just haven't, we're in such early stages, we've not identified that community center. But we're happy to talk to the council members on some suggestions that they have, which might include a library, a school, or a community center.
I would, I would definitely make sure that you include Councilmember Daniels and Mayor Protem Glover in that discussion, based off of this discussion too. That'd be, that'd be a great asset for us to have. And I think I remember something, it had to be like one gig service or something like that.
I believe it will, it's all one gig service, so.
That'd be fantastic.
Okay. And I will say, Mayor, as Ms. Smith acknowledged, city staff has been working on putting a video together that will also complement this from the, the, the communication from Metronet. We're not quite ready to release the video, but we'll make sure we share it with the council, because we would like the council members to also share all this information on your, on your social media channels, because, because the more the community understands about the construction, the easier it may be on everyone.
Any other questions for Ms. Smith?
This is Councilmember Meyerhofer. I was just gonna say to Monica, I can see that Greenfield Boulevard is, is covered in, on their map. I don't, I don't know what the other two were she mentioned, but I can see Greenfield covered.
Thank you for looking that up, I appreciate it.
That's my PSA for the day, thank you.
He's a lawyer, so only does one a day. Unless you pay him, if you pay him, he'll do more than that.
That was your pro bono for the day.
If no one else has any other questions, again, Ms. Smith, thank you so much. Happy birthday. We're looking forward to welcoming Metronet to our community. I know that many citizens have expressed their eagerness to, to have your services in our community, and we're looking forward to creating a good partnership.
Well, thank you, I appreciate you all having me today. Again, don't hesitate to reach out with any additional questions, and I hope you have a great rest of your day. Thank you.
You too.
I can't wait to have her here a year from now, and, you know, as it's all done.
Yes, yes, that'll be exciting, won't it?
That's right.
Thank you all.
Take care.
Thanks.
Madam Manager, our next item?
Thank you, Mayor. Our next presentation is by the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plain. We have Kimberly Boyd, who is the president and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plain. And she will also introduce several of her staff members that are on the call. As we have discussed with, shared with the council, the Boys and Girls Club is interested in using the Intergenerational Center as a club location, and Ms. Boyd wanted to come and talk, provide some background information about the Boys and Girls Club, and the vision and goals of the organization, as well as specifically address what, what they would, what their proposal might, would be for using the Intergenerational Center. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Boyd and her staff, and she can introduce the staff on the call. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Manager Wall. Really appreciate the opportunity to be with you this afternoon, and thank you to several folks who've had conversations with us and just helping to guide our thinking and our approach to the opportunity that, that presents itself, the Lucille Gorham Intergenerational Center there in West Greenville. As, as Ms. Wall said, my name is Kimberly Boyd, and I'm the president and CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Coastal Plain. We are a 17-club organization that spans across seven counties, but our, but our main offices are here in Greenville. It's a pleasure to be with all of you this evening. And with that, I want to introduce three key members of my team, who are organizational leaders, who will be really instrumental in the opportunity that presents itself at the, at the Intergenerational Center. So first, we'll start with Dre.
Good afternoon, everyone. Nice to be here and good to see everyone. My name is Dre Nix, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plain.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's Dre. Greg?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Greg Titus. I am the Vice President of Operations for the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plain.
Welcome.
We also call Greg Super Safety Man. He's our safety guru in all things fleet and facility, so he's gotten us through this pandemic with flying colors. And Shonda?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Shonda Lovett, currently serving as the Regional Vice President for Region 1, representing Pitt County.
Welcome, thank you for being here.
So Shonda is our local leader, supervising all five of our Pitt County clubs. And, and so she will take on this, this task as well. So it's a pleasure to be here. I'm gonna take a moment and share my screen. All right, are we all seeing that? We good?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, great. And I'm gonna let Dre take us through the beginning, give you some of the background on the organization.
You have a full screen on the slide, Kimberly?
It's not cooperating, there we go.
Okay, there we go, okay. Well, good afternoon again, everyone. And as Kimberly stated, Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plain, we are 17 clubs in seven counties, divided into three regions. Region 1 is Pitt County, Region 2 serves Lenore, Green, Martin, and Beaufort County. And Region 3 is Craven and Carteret County. Next slide, please. As an organization, Boys and Girls Club, our mission is to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to realize their full potential as productive, caring, responsible citizens. Everything we do with our members, starting age 6 through 18, as they graduate from high school and go beyond to post-secondary, is focused on this mission. Thanks. Our vision as an organization- Our vision as an organization is every child and teen who walks through our doors is inspired and prepared for the future of their choice. Um, a lot of our programs and opportunities that we give to our young people helps them to envision beyond their situation presently. Next. As an organization, we move with core values. Those values are excellence, integrity, dedication, innovation, and unity. And we all all five of these are represented um, within the organization each and every month. Um, we choose one at this month, I want to say it's excellent. So it's um, it's emphasized across the organization, within the clubs as leaders. We um, we move in that space each month. And it's and we also make sure that our young people have lessons day to day within the club that highlight that core value of the organization. Thank you.
Now, I just want to talk about the unique opportunity that presents itself at the Lucille Gorham Intergenerational um, Community Center. I think one of the things that excites us most about this is the fact that it is an intergenerational campus. And intergenerational work is something that has been at the forefront of a goal for our organization for several years now. Um, both Dre and I have both operated in organizations that have accomplished intergenerational work in the past. And we've seen the magic of bringing together our seniors and our young people together within a community and their remarkable lessons that can be learned from one generation to the next, um, and the life that it breathes into a into a local community. And so we have reached out to um, partners of ours throughout the community to see if they would be interested in joining us and really bringing together a a group of um, resources that can work together and really at the at the leadership of the local community, create opportunities and experiences that meet the needs of of our local community. Um, most importantly, we've reached out to the Pitt County Council on Aging and asked if they would be interested in bringing a senior center to West Greenville um, and those resources along with it. Um, they are very enthusiastic about that opportunity, and I think they are working uh, sort of negotiating separately uh, with City Manager Wall, but um, but they are very interested. And we've had several conversations with them. What we would really like to be able to do is to bring the seniors and the young people together, especially in the summer when the kids are there during the day, and there's lots of opportunity. We have many of our clubs that already have connections with local senior centers or or um, uh, retirement centers and other community groups like that, uh, because the children really love to connect and make things and create opportunities for them. But we also believe that the seniors can bring some really critical um, hobbies and and skills and storytelling to our young people as well. We've also reached out to the North Carolina Cooperative Extension, uh, specifically around the the community garden that exists on the property. We have uh, community gardens and garden spaces in a lot of our clubs. And it's a wonderful way for our young people to learn and understand where food comes from, understand the cultivation process, and then also with it nutrition lessons and really life lessons that go along with that. The North Carolina Cooperative Extension, as many of you may know, actually trains master gardeners, uh, which is a formal training program. But in order to go through the program, the the gardeners have to commit to working with a local nonprofit, serving a local community. And so the Cooperative Extension has indicated that if we can find seniors from West Greenville who might be interested in working with the young people in the garden, we can have them formally trained as master gardeners and then get all of the resources that come from the Cooperative Extension, including nutrition and health, education, cooking classes, nutrition demonstration, and that type of opportunity, not only for our young people, but for the full community. Um, we've also been working uh, both with ECU and Vident and looking at opportunities to bring health and wellness opportunities to the campus, um, both for seniors, the community, and our young people. Um, everything from health screening, uh, understanding chronic disease management, um, annual health fair days and and those types of experiences. I understand that um, the Lucille Gorham Days are going to be something quite fun to celebrate, and we want to uh, bring those folks in. And we also have um, have had agreements with the School of Social Work, and we have social work students, both undergrad and masters level, who are doing mental health work with our young people in the clubs. And we're interested in bringing that to the community level as well. Um, and then the the dental school and the medical school are also interested in having some community-based um, education experiences for their students um, that might be able to happen there um, at the community center at the Lucille Gorham Center as well. So we really anticipate, um, we hope to be sort of a a backbone organization that can keep the the campus alive and vibrant, and then opening its doors and be sort of representative of the city onsite to allow the campus uh, to really embrace anything that the local community is really interested in doing. Just to give you some um, idea of our our core work with young people. So we have three pillars of our work with young people. The first is academic success. And as you can imagine right now, that is a that is our primary focus, is remediating some of the learning loss that's been experienced through COVID. And then we're really gearing up our summer programming and engaging with certified teachers to help with our young people uh, throughout the summer. Uh, through our academic success program, and we do an hour of what we call Power Hour every day. So everyone is has one full hour of academic work that includes homework help, but it also includes one-on-one and small group tutoring. STEM is a big focus of ours as is workforce preparation and looking at job and career education. Our second focus is around healthy lifestyles. So our kids are twice as likely to get their um, average daily uh, exercise in as kids in the general population, because we do a lot of um, of exercise, different types of exercise with them. Uh, we've also just entered a partnership with ECU, and all of our Pitt County um, uh, young people this summer will be engaged in water safety and swimming lessons. And so we're looking to not only create kids who are comfortable around water, but are really proficient swimmers, um, and ideally get them ready for the the new pool to open there in West Greenville, which we're all very excited about. And we're hoping we can even get our teens through and ready to be lifeguards uh, when the pool is is ready to open. We also do a lot with nutrition and education. Um, every every one of our young people gets a hot meal and a healthy snack every day. Um, in the in the summertime, we do two meals and a snack every day. And and there's some lobbying happening at the state level to try to get that to three meals a day in the summer. Uh, but we also do a lot around nutrition education and helping helping young people understand making good choices. Um, and then finally, within healthy lifestyles, we do a lot around decision-making. And this is where all of our um, education around resistance behavior, understanding the risks of drug and alcohol engagement, early sexual activity, bullying, uh, safe and healthy relationships, understanding what um, those mean as you get older and where to go for questions and all of those kind of things. We do quite a bit of gen- gender-based programming so that our young men and young women have an opportunity to ask questions and and through the developmental stages, really come to understand um, their own their own sense of agency and control in their lives. Um, and we'll show you a little bit about our impact there later. And our third pillar is around citizenship. So we have a healthy focus around uh, really becoming engaged in local communities. Our young people go and they like to present at school board meetings, city council, county councils. Um, they're engaged in in political engagement. They were very active in the um, we all did mock um, elections in the clubs so that they understood what it meant to be part of the political process and getting engaged in that. And we take our teens to attend council meetings and other uh, forms of local government so they can come and understand what what those opportunities are locally. Uh, we also have a very active leadership engagement program. Starts in middle school, it's called the Torch Club, and it's all built around service to community. Um, and there are leadership opportunities within that. As they transition to high school, they're they're, it's called a Keystone Club. And Keystone is actually a national program, so they can, they not only engage locally and have a leadership opportunities that way, but then they also engage with other Keystone Clubs across the state. And once a year, through a national conference uh, of of young team leaders. Um, so that's a big focus of ours as well. Our young people do service in three ways. They do service in their club, they do service in their home, and they do service to the community. So even through COVID last year, I think our Pitt County Clubs did about fourteen hundred hours of community service, um, even though mu- much of that was virtual. And then as we think about how this campus can embrace seniors and the community, um, nutrition and wellness, obviously, the the senior centers come with a feeding program for at-risk seniors, um, health and nutrition education that happens there, and of course, opportunities for engagement um, and socialization. One of the things we would like to do, um, that we've talked to the city manager about is the opportunity to use the upstairs from the office building as an as an executive office space for our, the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Coastal Plain. So all of our senior leaders would be relocated to the West Greenville location. But then we could also serve as sort of a community host for the lower floor of that building to operate as an open community gathering space, meeting space, um, opportunities for our quilting group to come back together um, and other other types of social recreation and gathering that can happen there. Um, we can um, we can commit to staffing the the entrance of that building and be be there and sharing in that in in the upkeep of that space uh, to ensure that it stays open and available to members of the community um, at their discretion and what they think is most important. Uh, and we really would like to uh, bring together a local community planning group that would really direct us in how they would like that space to be used, just so we understand that the hours and the types of experiences that they would they would like to see happen there. One of the things we'd like to have happen there, uh, that happens at some of our other community centers that we're engaged with, um, is social recreation. Um, so Dre can tell you, there's a community center that we're involved with down in New Bern. Um, and there's a group of six gentlemen that play cards there every day. And uh, we call them collectively the mayors of of that little uh, part of the of the community. Um, because they're all, they know exactly what we're doing and what we're there and 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 what everybody should be doing when they're there. Uh, but the the reality is that they are wonderful ambassadors for their community and make sure that that what is happening in their community is what the community really needs. Um, it's also a place for leadership education or other community connection. Um, so we're really excited to see what the community would bring forth in terms of the use of that space. We would like to um, focus on local small businesses and um, job skills and employment in the community. So how we, uh, we start our our job preparation and career exploration in fifth grade. Um, by sixth grade, our kids are um, off and in visiting local um, local organizations and local businesses to understand what those, what the jobs are right here in their community. And then they each have an individual uh, career planning workbook. And in that, they go back and they say, okay, if I want to work at Greenville Utilities, then I, this is the kind of education I need, and this is where I can get that. And this is what I have to do in high school in order to qualify for that uh, education program. And finally, this is what I need to do in middle school to be ready to take the right classes in high school. So we try to trace it all the way back to what they're doing right now. Um, with that, with a special goal of telling them that seventh grade math is in fact important. Um, and it is something they're going to use for the rest of their life. So I'll just summarize that that we really would love to see um, and embrace the full um, intention of the Lucille Gorham Intergenerational Community Center and making it a place for all of Greenville, uh, but most importantly, at the direction of the residents of West Greenville, and having them lead what this looks like ultimately, and the opportunities that exist within it. Uh, but we do think that every day it can meet the needs of kids, seniors, and the community, um, and that there's an opportunity for us to do it. And and I think we will uh, we will anticipate that, you know, every day um, at the at the Boys and Girls Club there at this at the center, which would be the the old school building, um, that we would operate in the summer, probably from seven or seven-thirty until six at night. So we'll be open full days, teacher workdays, school holidays. Um, if there are more COVID restrictions, we do our best to keep open and maintaining social distancing and all of those restrictions. We operate at a very very high level of personal protective equipment uh, to ensure that our young people are safe. Uh, but we want to be there um, and and available and open. Uh, we'll be open all summer, school holidays, spring break, all of those those kind of opportunities. Um, and we really see our kids um, getting that strong focus around academic support. We've uh, just this morning, reached out to all of our superintendents to look at how we can wrap our summer services around theirs, ensure that we have busing coming from the summer school programs back to the club, um, to make sure that families have a full day of coverage um, for their return to work, uh, which we know is really important. And it looks like many of the summer school options will end at noon. And we want to be sure that families have the support that they need. So I'm going to turn it back over to Dre, and she's going to share a little bit more about the impact of some of our programs in our other locations.
Thank you, Kimberly. Um, overall, for the impact um, for our programs, um, as Kimberly stated earlier, with the swimming program, what we've found over the years is our kids are surrounded by water. And uh, there's just a percentage of them that have basic swimming skills are very low. So we're hoping that over the next couple of years, that more, the percentage of our club members and community kids will be higher than a proficient swimmers um, around. Uh, next please. Um, community engagement, as stated earlier, um, this is huge for our young people um, through community service and also teenagers being engaged in their civic duty civic duty. Um, this is something where we start very young to get them engaged in the community. So beyond, you know, high school into post-secondary school, they are they are already aware of the things that they can do to help impact their community and make a better future for everyone. Connected to the seniors, um, most of us know that um, our senior citizens, they carry a wealth of knowledge about our community, the past. And um, sometimes they're just history books, history, the stories that they tell come alive. And this is some, this is a way, all of our children, they learn differently. And by connecting them to the seniors in their community, that helps build a sense of pride as well. Because those individuals who were there saw the the changes in the community over the years. They can then help our young people now appreciate what they do have, but also encourage them to do more to move their community into the future. Work-ready teens, um, soft skills, this is something that we hear countless um, countless employees talk about. So we work with our young people on this. A lot of our teenagers, their first job is at the Boys and Girls Club. They start as volunteers, they come back, um, summer jobs, or coming back from um, university for the summer, spring break, the holidays. Um, we give them that first that first job because they grew up in the club, they know the rules, they already know the program, the impact of the program, and they make great peers. So this is, this is a way where we can get them work-ready. Most of the time, we try to make sure that we, we would love for them to be future Boys and Girls Club professionals, but we encourage them in whatever avenue that they would like to um, proceed into. And healthier citizens. With all of these things combined, we know that our communities in the future would be a healthier place overall, each individually, whether it's their healthy lifestyles or just the way they think, thinking beyond their borders, you know, having um, being safe swimmers and teaching that to the next generation. So overall, the impact for the community is, you know, what we do within the club and beyond the doors of the Boys and Girls Club will overall make our communities a better place for everyone, um, ages six through eighteen and beyond that. Um, the next slide, what this shows is how Boys and Girls Club Coastal Plain, how we measure up um, through our NYOI, which is our National Youth Outcomes Measurement. Now, the the US um, numbers, there are numbers that in comparison to, from the Centers for Disease Control, uh, National Youth Risk Behaviors. And so the blue shows where Boys and Girls Club of the Coastal Plain, where our teens measure up through um, abstinence from sexual activity, um, cigarette smoking, drinking alcohol, marijuana use, and youth getting the recommended physical activity. Next slide. And that brings us to the end of our presentation. I appreciate everyone um, giving us this opportunity to present today to just give you a little bit more information as to what we do within the four walls of our Boys and Girls Club. We don't just play basketball, like people think. But um, if anyone had any questions for any of us, um, we'd love to hear those questions now, please.
So anyone have any questions for the uh, Boys and Girls Clubs members?
Yes.
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Smiley?
Um, I'm probably not telling you anything, you already know you can't put every collaborator up on the screen, but uh, the Sepulveda Memorial Library has a branch, you know, right next door, and their mission is very closely aligned with yours. And um, they have a wealth of resources as well. So I imagine you guys are already working with them, but uh, if you would make sure that, you know, that they know what you're doing and what your plans are. I can't imagine that they wouldn't be just falling all over themselves to help out.
Thank you, we'll definitely make sure that we reach out to them, yeah.
Greg, Greg Needham, or you can call me and I'll set it up, but I'm sure you also have a contact there yourself.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yes, they work with us very closely in um, our programs. Um, so we do have a relationship with them, and we'll look to strengthen it as well.
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions for the Boys and Girls Club?
I don't have a question, just a comment. To thank you all for for what you're doing and for coming and um, such a lovely presentation. And I love the accent.
You heard it this time, huh?
Yes. But thank you all once again. I I truly appreciate the time that you're taking to educate the community on the Boys and Girls Club. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
And I'll echo, I'll echo those same comments. I appreciate it, and I like how uh, how diverse it's going to be with seniors and children working together. I think it's extremely important. And I think that uh, the Lucille Gorham Intergenerational Center is a great location in West Greenville to be able to bring and and bring children and bring adults together and and be able to share a lot of uh, together and be able to share a lot of stories and experiences that will be beneficial for those young children that are growing up. So we appreciate you incorporating that as well.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right. No other questions? Thank you for your time.
I just wanted, Mayor, I just want to thank Kimberly and her staff for coming to do the presentation for us today, and I'm really excited. They are basically what the Lucio Gorham Center has done in the past, so I'm looking forward to seeing that continue and watching the growth with the Boys and Girls Center. It looks like they've reached out to a lot of partners, the hospital, dental school, and places like that, and that's what we need in our community. We need all the help we can get, so we're just excited that the Boys and Girls Club has decided to choose the Intergenerational Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
I'll just add one more point, Mayor, and that's something that the city manager pointed out when we did our conversation with her last week. It's one of the things we're most excited about. Many of you know, we have a Boys and Girls Club in Farmville, and one of the things that's always been a struggle for us is that a lot of the young people who attend the Farmville schools are actually from West Greenville, and the families have talked to us over and over again about the fact that they would like their kids to be involved with the club, but it's just too much of a distance for them to get up there at the end of the day to pick their kids back up. And so we're excited for all of these families that we have seen through community events and school-based events in Farmville, to be able to reach out to them and say that we're, you know, we have an opportunity for them in their own community where they can, you know, where they'll just be right there, and services in the summer will be so much more accessible to them as well. So we just appreciate the opportunity to be considered for this, you know, for this great location.
Thank you. That's great news. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. We appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, you too.
Thanks. Madam Manager, our next item on the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item on the agenda is a public art recommendation for a Dave Mira sculpture at the Extreme Park at J.C. Park, and I'll turn that over to Holly Garriatt, who's the Executive Director of the Arts Council at Emerge. Ms. Garriatt?
Thanks so much for having me here this evening. Today, we will be making two recommendations for public art on public property. The first is a piece of public art, which is a sculpture in memory of Dave Mira. As many of you know, Dave was an internationally known athlete and BMX rider who really put Greenville, North Carolina on the map as BMX Pro Town USA. He not only made Greenville such a destination and home for many professional BMX athletes, he was also instrumental in expanding our city's recreational offerings, specifically the Extreme Park at J.C. Park. And I know my kids at age two were out there on their bikes, on the ramps, and almost every day we're out there, and so many other Greenville residents do the same. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. So this specific sculpture, the name is the Dave Mira Legacy, Stay Brave, Stay Strong. The location is at the Extreme Park at J.C. Park, and you can see the approximate location of the sculpture would be in the grassy area at the entrance of the Extreme Park. The size is 14 feet tall, the base is about four by four feet wide, and the material is stainless steel. This is a donation, so there's no selection process. For the Civic Arts Committee, however, the Civic Arts Committee has looked over and had correspondence with the stakeholders and artists. The main creators of the sculpture are Don Weigent, Brian Lee, and Mike Laird. Here's an elevation of both the pedestal and the sculpture, and as I said, it's 14 feet The cost to the city is $0. This will be completely donated by family and friends of Dave Mira. They are the major stakeholders and supporters. The artists have donated their time, and the installation and concrete foundation will also completely be funded and installed by the family and friends with supervision by our city liaison department, which is the Recreation and Parks Department. Specifically, Mike Watson has been our main correspondence. The implementation timeframe for this sculpture would be the spring of 2021, and the community engagement that we'll be continuing to do this next month before the next city council meeting, of course, this workshop, there was a great article in the newspaper today, we'll also be posting this on the Arts Council's website to let as many people know about it as possible. And the Civic Arts Committee recommendation is for the city council to approve the implementation of this Dave Mira memorial sculpture. However, no action is required today. Any questions?
All right. Any questions for Ms. Garrett? No, I don't think so.
All right. Well, we're so excited and really appreciate the family and friends. This is such an important memorial for such an important citizen of Greenville. Okay.
Absolutely. You'll be bringing this to us, I guess, in April, is that correct?
That's correct.
Perfect. We appreciate it. We look forward to discussing it more.
Mayor, are you ready for the last item?
Last item.
Thank you. The last item is a public art recommendation for the Emerald Loop Pavement Art and Lighting Plan. Again, Ms. Garrett?
All right. Well, we're really excited to be able to give you an update on our implementation for the first year of the Emerald Loop. As you may recall, in August, the city council approved the Emerald Loop Vision Plan after two years of planning. Just a summary of the Emerald Loop project in 2018, Greenville, North Carolina, was designated a smart city by the North Carolina Arts Council. We were the fifth city in North Carolina to gain this designation, and we were the only city this fiscal year to continue to receive North Carolina Arts Council funding. The North Carolina Arts Council actually disbanded the Smart Communities grant for this year due to the pandemic and redistributing funds. However, they continued their grant to the City of Greenville and the Arts Council for the Emerald Loop because of our strong partnership with the city and our major stakeholders and the ability to still be able to implement some of our projects. So that's something really, really great. I also want to remind you that we have a national endowment for the arts, Our Town Grant. Where the City of Greenville and the Arts Council were co-applicants. This is a $75,000 grant for the Emerald Loop, and hopefully, we will be hearing this month or next month, well, whether we receive that grant. So keep your fingers crossed. Here's the timeline of the project, and I want to bring this to you because we have had to redistribute some of our projects. If you will recall, in August, the vision plan that you approved, we did have the gateway street paving treatment at Evans and Reed at the intersection there, and the RFQ for lighting standards and specifications that will be released this year for the district. However, we have moved planning for the Emerald Loop Trolley and Trolley Signs and Shelters to Year Two with the already planned lighting of municipal and stakeholder buildings and three additional gateway street paving treatments at Fifth and Pitt, Evans and Fifth, and Fifth and Reed, which we're hoping to be part of the build project. So our first project of the Emerald Loop is the intersection at Reed and Evans. Just a reminder of the selection process for this designer. We released a national request for qualifications back in 2018, and the Smart City Resource Team, which we have many stakeholders, including city representation on that committee, that resource team chose Hadad and Druigan, the artist design team, to design this intersection. We will be hiring a company called Cactix, who will be the contractor who will actually do the application of the Durotherm, which I'll explain in just a little bit. So this is the design of the intersection pavement art, which will be done in a hexagonal pattern, I'll show you in a minute. This will be either a three-color or four-color design, and you might be going, what does this have to do with an emerald? But the hexagonal shape in the middle is the pattern that will be repeated through many, many projects with the entire Emerald Loop. This is the elemental design of the emerald, and in the three additional designs that will be on Fifth Street, there will be different treatments of this hexagonal shape. Because this intersection is so big, the star design was chosen so we can reach out with not using as much material as would be needed if we were to do this through the entire intersection. So really creative implementation of the Durotherm. This is an image just showing you what it'll look like when you come up in a vehicle. Our city liaisons, who we are working with to go through all the planning and logistics, are the City of Greenville Engineering Department and Public Works Department, specifically Lisa Kirby, Rick DeSazer, and Kevin Mulligan. Our implementation timeframe for this project is the end of May or the month of June 2021. We're working with Meredith, with Uptown Greenville, and other stakeholders to find a time with the least impact to the businesses and traffic. And here's a list of our major stakeholders and supporters of the Emerald Loop. Our resource team is made up of nearly 20 people of different stakeholders, and really, the partnerships have made this project, come up with this project, and they have continued to be a part of this project. So this is a little bit of an explanation of the Durotherm. What is great about this material is that a stencil is put down and a machine actually imprints, goes into the asphalt, so it's lower. If you can see that right image, the color material is actually below the surface, which helps with wear or tear. So that imprint happens, and then the Durotherm material is actually heated and imprinted down below the surface. The expected lifespan is around 10 years, and the Arts Council will fund any maintenance if needed before the next scheduled city repaving occurs. And then our community engagement for this project, we have had two, well, now three, nearly three years of meetings and community engagement projects. We have had the approval of the Emerald Loop Vision Plan by the City Council in August. We have an entire page dedicated to the Emerald Loop on the Pitt County Arts Council's website, and the resource team will be overseeing this as well as the Civic Arts Committee. The second part of our project, which I just want to let you know about, is we will be releasing a request for qualifications to hire an artistic lighting designer. If you'll recall, from Hadad and Druigan's plan, this is a page from their vision plan, we are, this lighting designer will be creating standards and specifications and recommendations for potential lighting plans and implementation on hopefully municipal buildings, other stakeholders. We have the silos at the Ficklin Warehouse Project, the radio tower on top of the Century Link Building, and our goal is by hiring this lighting designer, we will have many stakeholder meetings to include interested entities who would like to have a lighting plan to really cohesify, bring together our entire district. So just imagine on certain evenings, you're driving toward the uptown area, and there's this green glow or purple glow, because all the lighting plans are in sync. So we're really excited about this opportunity. And Hadad and Druigan will also stay on to work with this lighting designer to make sure we stay as true to the vision plan as possible. So the cost to the city is approximately $40,000, which is included in the city's adopted fiscal year, this fiscal year budget, to fund this partnership initiative, and our Civic Arts Committee recommendation is for the city council to approve the implementation of the first year of the Emerald Loop project, and specifically the intersection pavement art at Reed and Evans. So thank you very much.
Any questions for Ms. Garrett?
I have one.
Councilmember Smiley?
So you guys, forgive me if you've already made this plane somewhere, but, you know, go back, you might, go back, we're going to want to see that.
Okay.
The, I know Evans Street runs generally north-south, and you're painting what could be considered to be a compass rose in the middle of it. Is it actually oriented north-south? You know, do the arrows point to the north?
Well, in this design, it is north-south.
I'm just saying, is there any, you know, is the goal to make the rose, to the design symmetrical with the intersection, or is it actually an attempt to make it symmetrical with, for the arrows to actually point north-south? And I'm not suggesting really in one way or the other, I just, you can imagine somebody walking along there thinking, oh, it's a compass rose, that must point north. And I don't know that the road runs perfectly north-south.
Well, I'll have to ask the artist about that, but however, our goal is eventually to create some sort of route, you know, to guide people through the uptown district. So that's a good thought. I'll bring that back to Hadad and Druigan.
All right. Any other questions?
Well, the only direction that would matter then would be the east, right? East. Come on, somebody else got that.
Any other questions or comments? So you need none? Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Garrett. We appreciate you coming in, looking forward to the presentation next month, and I guess that's all we've got.
Mayor, we will see you at 6:00.
All right. Looking for, I need a motion to adjourn.
Councilmember Bell, so moved.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Perotan Glover? Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Councilmember Litchfield, aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes Mayor 6-0.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you back here at 6:00 PM, so in about 47 minutes.